I'll introduce Carl.
Yes. Good evening. Welcome to the City of Palm Coast Virtual City Council Business Meeting. It is July 7, 2020 pursuant to the Governor's Executive Order Number 2069 suspending all Florida statutes that require a quorum to be present in person at local government public meetings or require a local government body to meet at a specific public place. The city must, the city may conduct meetings of its council without having a quorum of its members present physically or at any specific location and utilizing communications media technology such as telephonic or video conferencing as provided by Florida statutes. As mayor pursuant to the authority granted to me, granted by me or to me by the city charter, I declared a public emergency on March 15, 2020 in response to COVID-19. Furthermore pursuant to those powers and the Governor's Executive Order, I suspended all city requirements that require a physical quorum to be present to conduct this meeting and authorize that this meeting be conducted by communications media technology under the city's State of Emergency Proclamation for virtual meetings executed on April 3, 2020. City manager pursuant to the authority granted him by the city's initial state of emergency for COVID-19 has closed City Hall to the public. Therefore, no member of the public will be allowed into the community wing of City Hall during this meeting. Notice that this meeting was going to be held by communication media technology and not at a physical location was posted on the city's website at least five days ago. The notice provided that those members of the public needing reasonable accommodation to participate in the meeting could contact the city clerk for assistance by noon on Monday, May 18, 2020. Access to this meeting is being provided via livestream on the city's website at www.palmcoastgov.com and by calling at 386-223-1690. Should you need technical assistance, please call 386-986-2391. Today is July 7, 2020. It is 6:00 PM. Please join, please rise and join me in the pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Clufus. Councilmember Branquino.
Present.
Here.
Councilmember Cuff. Councilmember Howell.
Present.
And Mayor Holland.
Gotcha. Here.
All members are present.
Okay. We'll now move to Agenda Item Number D, which is public participation. Public participation will work as follows. You would like to make public comments? We are asking you to please call 386-223-1690. You will need to hit *9 to raise your hand to provide your comments. You will be acknowledged by being unmuted and you will hear a message that you have been unmuted. Please begin by stating your name clearly for the record. You will have up to three minutes to speak. When there's 15 seconds left of your three minutes, you will hear a beep and at the end of your three minutes, you will hear another beep. All callers will have the opportunity to speak. Please be aware, there may be a short pause as we switch the next caller. We will now begin. Okay, please begin.
Yes ma'am, this is James and Kathy Ples. We live in Flagler Beach, Florida. We would, we would like the mandatory mask to move. We vote, we both vote yes. Thank you and have a good night.
Thank you very much. Next speaker. Go ahead. Please state your name for the record.
Kate Foké.
And please go ahead.
I don't agree with mandatory masks. I think it should be up to the individual. There are plenty of us that have absolutely no underlying health problems. We are not sick. We don't have any issues. And especially with certain things to restrict us to this, I think is totally against our constitutional right. If I was sick, if I was wearing a fever, I had a cough or cold, I would most definitely wear a mask. Our community has been the lowest because we actually do care about each other and we are taking those precautions seriously. But to wear a mask mandatorily, I believe is not okay.
Thank you for your comments. Any other speakers stuck? Thank you. Okay, we will close public comment and we will take the speaker's comments into consideration when we deliberate that discussion and that issue, when it was brought up, when it will be brought up on the agenda. Okay, we will now move to Agenda Item Number E, which is the approval of the minutes for City Council, June 16, 2020, City Council Business Meeting. Do I have a motion?
I'm gonna make that motion.
Moved.
I'll second it.
And seconded. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Clufus.
Aye.
Councilmember Branquino.
Yes.
Councilmember Cuff.
Yes.
Councilmember Howell.
Yes.
Mayor Holland.
Yes.
Mayor, the motion passes 5 to 0.
Thank you. Agenda Item Number F2 is a proclamation for Parks and Rec Month. I will read that now into the record. Whereas parks and recreation systems are dedicated to enhancing the quality of life for millions of residents and communities around the world through recreation programming and conservation efforts. Whereas parks, trails, and recreation activities provide opportunities for both young and older members of the community alike to create continuous life experiences. And whereas parks, trails, and recreation activities generate opportunities for people to come together and experience a sense of community. And whereas parks, trails, and recreation activities pay dividends to communities by attracting businesses, jobs, and increasing house values. Whereas the City of Palm Coast recognizes the vital contributions of employees and volunteers in parks and recreation facilities. Whereas the dedicated supporters keep parks clean and safe for visitors, organize activities for all ages, and advocate for additional amenities. And whereas parks and recreation staff are innovative and creative ensuring Palm Coast residents have opportunities to connect, even if it has to be virtually during times in-person interactions are not possible. Now therefore, it be resolved by the mayor and the city council of the City of Palm Coast, do hereby proclaim the month of July 20th, July 2020, as Parks and Recreation Month. Be it further resolved that we hereby request that during Parks and Recreation Month, that all citizens explore, connect, and play Palm Coast by taking part in their favorite sports, visiting the outdoors, and spending time with family and friends. Adopted this 7th day of July 2020, signed by Mayor Melissa Holland.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Lauren Johnston, Palm Coast Parks and Recreation Director, and I am here with Brittany McDermott, our Community Recreation Manager, and we are here to celebrate July is Parks and Recreation Month. We are the place and activity that brings the fun. Palm Coast has a mix of parks and active and passive recreation. Our parks connect through a network of 130-plus miles of multipurpose paths, a trail system that winds through diverse ecosystems, plants, and wildlife. The city also has a golf course, tennis center, and swimming pool as well as the Palm Coast Community Center, which serves as the hub of Parks and Recreation. Our department saw great success during fiscal year 1819 in our number of activities and programs offered and the event attendance. This fiscal year, our department was on its strongest year yet. We had record numbers in the Pink Army 5K. We hosted the first annual Veterans Day luncheon, a great turnout for the Feet to Feast 5K, a new tree in Town Center in Central Park, and our longest but smoothest parade route with also record attendance. Into 2020, we launched the Mayor's 9090 Challenge. We hosted the Palm Coast Open sponsored by Riley Opelka, which featured events of its own. Then, then our world changed as we know it as COVID-19 happened, but we still found a way to stay connected. We hosted over 40 virtual recreation programs. We worked with our community partners to bring content to our residents who were staying at home. Then, when the governor announced his reopening strategy, we began a soft opening and limited access to our parks and trails. Soon, the Palm Harbor Golf Course and Palm Coast Tennis Center opened. And finally, we opened the community center to our summer campers. The Mayor's 9090 was put on a brief hold during COVID-19, but we resumed the challenge in June once more parks and facilities reopened. These photos around this graphic feature a number of our dedicated social media influencers that help drive our community engagement. We see Councilmember, Vice Mayor Clufus always keeping us going with his runs, no matter if it was daytime or nighttime. We had a total of 249 participants this year. There were 22,000 miles logged, 68,000 minutes logged, and the most popular activities were running and biking. This year's challenge was logged into Palm Coast Connect and the list was not, was very unlimited. We even created an other category so you could log cleaning your garage, chores, et cetera. We really wanted our residents to exercise the way that they best suited them. As a way for us to continue to stay connected through COVID-19, we created virtual recreation with opportunities from water safety to art, esports, and STEM. One of our seniors, Milda, was so touched by our pen pal program. She shared that her pen pal participated with her family. The kids made handcrafted cards and dropped them off with flowers and paper towels to her doorstep. Some of our events were moved to virtual environment as well. We wanted our families to continue to make memories in their homes and in their backyards. We taught them how to tie a knot to go fishing, read stories. We did crafts with our toddlers. And the Palm Coast Historical Society taught us about our own history in Palm Coast. We're grateful for all of our continued partnerships during good times and those unprecedented. And as we transition into a new normal, we successfully had our first virtual and socially distant event with the turtle being dedicated at the Palm Coast Community Center. That's Vincent Schoen. And then we also earned a, United States Tennis Association, USTA, did a grant and we were awarded the Facility Recovery Grant to assist with COVID-19 expenses. And at the community center, we adjusted our camp curriculum and to offer safe and fun experience for the children of Palm Coast. I'm now gonna turn it over to Brittany McDermott, who is our Community Recreation Manager, and she's gonna show you how we are moving forward.
Thank you and good evening, Mayor and Council. So this brought us to how does our department move forward and what are our next steps? We realized that this was a pivotal time to have a very strong marketing and communication strategy. We needed to make sure that our messaging was cohesive and strong in a way that tied together all of our channels. So we stepped back and thought about how can we accomplish this goal? And we like to say we came to sort of an epiphany and developed this very unique marketing strategy that we're very excited about and I'm building the suspense on purpose. So the next slide is gonna show you the graphic that we created that's gonna help you visualize what this strategy is and how it accomplishes these goals. It needed to be something that could really support communication initiatives, but also council priorities in a way that was above and beyond what we had ever done before. So without further ado, explore, connect, play. Now before I dive into what this means, I just wanna brag a little bit on our department. This concept and this graphic were completely conceptualized and designed in-house with Parks and Rec staff and we're very proud of that. Very excited to share this with you tonight. So explore, connect, play. What exactly does that mean? Our department is so diverse, not only in the residents we serve, from toddlers all the way to seniors, but also in the services that we provide. We have various recreation facilities and program opportunities from athletics to fitness activities, to cooking programs, to environmental education programs. You name it, we pretty much have it and we pretty much offer it. So explore, connect, play succinctly encapsulates what our department is and the core purpose of Parks and Rec and also helps to support those council priorities and communication initiatives. We basically wanted a way to really visualize and support the high quality of life that our residents have come to expect and deserve from us. So how exactly do we use explore, connect, play? So you are here with us tonight for Parks and Rec Month. We thought this was very appropriate timing to roll out this new strategy and we are excited to highlight our four featured events. We may have to offer them a little differently than we normally would, of course, due to COVID-19. So the fishing tournament in Torta Palm Coast will be virtual. The fishing tournament is gonna get kids and their families out into some of our local parks like Waterfront and Long Creek to do some saltwater fishing. Torta Palm Coast is gonna highlight some of our turtles on our turtle trail. Now Movies in the Park and Food Truck Tuesdays will be in-person events, but we have established some very important safety protocol to make sure that we are being as safe as we can during this time of COVID-19. I won't go into all the details of what those plans are, but I will highlight a few things. Movies in the Park is actually this Friday. Typically, it would have been held at Central Park, but we have moved it to Bel Air Park so that we can use the open field and we've actually marked 10-foot wide circles on the field that are spaced six feet apart so that families or groups can have their own designated space and separate it out from others. Food Truck Tuesdays, we are encouraging it to be more of a grab and go style. So we're separating the trucks out more and just encouraging people to grab and go and take it home with them. And you can learn about these events and all the safety protocol that we've established through Palm Coast Connect, which brings me to our next slide, which is our landing page on Palm Coast Connect. This is the hub for Parks and Rec information, but also the launching point to connect all of those channels like I mentioned. So we've completely revamped the page and again, we're using that explore, connect, play strategy and visuals. And then the tiles on the right-hand side are static, so those are always gonna be there. The icons match the icons that are found in the explore, connect, play graphic. And that's gonna connect all of our channels, like our registration through Civic Rec, more information about our events, and of course, our wonderful parks and trails. So we're very excited to have all of that built out. Now, as I mentioned before, it was important for this to support council focus areas and priorities, and we feel it does that in the areas of community engagement and business-friendly initiative. With community engagement, not only can we get questions and suggestions through Palm Coast Connect, but we can also create more of an interactive dialogue with our department by using some short surveys and even polls through that platform, which we're so excited to get launched. And then the business-friendly initiative, so the more that we promote and highlight our parks and trails and our wonderful recreation opportunities, the more need there's going to be for sporting equipment and athletic gear, which supports our local businesses and the Be Local By Local campaign. We're also partnering with more organizations than we ever had and building those strong partnerships, not only through sponsorship dollars, but also true partnership with community engagement and participation, which we're so excited to keep moving forward with that. So this brings us to how are we forging ahead? This is sort of a conceptual timeline that we've put together. You're here with us tonight as we unveil our explore, connect, play with Parks and Rec Month, but we wanna make sure that we emphasize that this is beyond Parks and Rec Month. This is gonna fuse into everything that our department does. So by fall, we hope to be expanding this concept into everything we do as a comprehensive Parks and Rec campaign. By winter of '21, we wanna use this core concept to create and market new programs. One example is we had this Living with Wildlife series and we've already renamed it to the Explore Wildlife series. That's just sort of a quick and easy example, but we wanna go above and beyond that to create some new innovative programs that are based around this concept and again, that push that consistent cohesive messaging. Finally, we've got Summer '21. We want to make sure that the graphics and the messaging are all reflected in our activity guide. That's one of our biggest marketing pieces that our department produces, so it's very important again to make sure we've got that consistent messaging and look. And then beyond that, we evaluate and see where we need to change if needed and then how to move forward and grow this concept. So we're so excited to unveil this and I'm going to turn it back over to Lauren to finish the last part of our presentation. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Brittany. So our final conclusion is our video that was created completely in-house by our Recreation Supervisor of Marketing, Kim Brown. This video features all of our staff and some of their family members enjoying what they love to do for work and in their personal life. We have a passion for recreation. We hope this video captures you to explore, connect, and play with Palm Coast Parks and Recreation.
Here we have, exactly. Over here, we have a magnolia tree, also commonly found in Florida. At certain times of the year, a pine cone-shaped pot will blossom into beautiful white flowers all over the tree. And then over here, we have a muscadine grapefruit.
Wow! Crash Mouse passing the animals below. She whistles her whiskers and squeaks. Hello! Mouse is so happy because she isn't alone. Come on, says elephant, it's time to go home. Thank you, Whisper's Mouse.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, for this wonderful opportunity and we hope to have you out at some of our virtual events and stop by any of the in-person events. And thank you for celebrating July is Parks and Recreation Month.
Thank you. Great presentation. Really appreciate it. We are now going to move to Agenda Item Number F3, which is a presentation of COVID-19 updates. Before we get an update from the chief, I want to bring up the discussion that I know everyone is extraordinarily excited to talk about is the wearing of masks and what we as a council feel is appropriate due to the recent spikes in our cases and the recommendation of our Health Department to require masks in certain settings that would help reduce and mitigate the spread of COVID-19 and hopefully get us through this without having to have the governor shut any further businesses down again. The economy, I don't believe, could even begin to handle that moment. So I wanted to take an opportunity. This is the first time we meet as a council. Some of the statistics that Dr. Stephen Bickel from the Health Department had stated on some of our virtual town halls had to do with if we could get 65% of our residents to wear masks indoors for 30 days straight, we would have our number down to zero. And he felt very strongly about that, of it being consistent, of it being one of community effort, community-wide, and one of sharing of this responsibility as we continue to make our way through a global pandemic in these unprecedented times. And so what I think I would like to do is, I know that our city manager has brought up New Smyrna Beach. I've looked at other communities as well. I know New Smyrna is one that felt like it was able to strike a good balance as far as a proclamation goes. Each one of us have received input from the sheriff as far as a recommendation that he has in order to maybe, again, strike that balance of ensuring that masks are worn, but doing it in a way that he feels is fair and balanced. So I think we have a lot of good input. I think we've got a lot of good recommendations from both, again, the Health Department. We have our emergency management team here that has been very consistent with mask wearing, has been very consistent with an educational campaign. I know we have signed a proclamation requesting our residents to wear masks. It has been signed by all the mayors. It has been signed by our emergency management director, our Health Department, as well as the county administrator. And so there's, there's a lot that has gone into wearing the mask campaign, certainly the educational component to it. But we, we have come to a moment in time where we do have to make a decision on what's, we feel is responsible as a governing body of residents of over 90,000 residents, where 43% are at-risk residents. And, and we do have to consider those that fall into that category that do have to go out, that, that aren't able necessarily just to stay indoors at all times. They have to make their way to medical appointments and prescriptions and to get their necessary food items that, that are necessary for them as well. So I'd like to open it up to the council for discussion. And Councilmember Branquino, since you are here, I always sort of like to look to my side partner to think about really where you stand on this issue, what you would like to see. Matt, if you have a template of New Smyrna or we just wanna talk about what we feel first and foremost about any type of mandatory requirement and then maybe we can talk about details and also the sheriff's input. Go ahead.
Thank you. Unfortunately, a lot of the people I know are making this not a health issue. They're making this a political issue. To the point that they feel that the inconvenience, they related to constitutional rights. Well, let me tell you about inconvenience. My son passed away less than two weeks ago. This kid wears his mask 12 hours a day. So I feel no sympathy for you with all due respect for not wanting to wear your mask one hour when you go to the supermarket. He came home many times with his ears, blisters on his ears, behind his ears. 12 hours a day before God took him away. As a nurse, he was wearing his mask. So with all due respect, wear your mask with the same honor and the same respect that my son did. that my son did for every single one of the people he took care of at the hospital. I'm sorry. That's it.
Branquino, Vice Mayor Clufus, your input would be helpful as well.
Absolutely. Good evening. And first, I would just like to extend my condolences to Councilmember Branquino. I can't imagine what the situation is like for you. Just know that I'm with you, and I have no words for what occurred, and I'm sorry. As far as the COVID mask-wearing situation, I'm in complete concurrence. I think right now, when we look at this from the stance of trying to keep our economy open and being able to have our students return to schools in the fall, we need to seriously try to eliminate any outbreak that we have locally here. And when we look at the data that, you know, there was 10 people on July 6th that were tested positive, but the median age is 62 years old. And then on the 3rd, the median age was 69 years old. And so we have to understand that we have a higher propensity of individuals who are susceptible and have comorbidities that we aren't necessarily as safe as everyone thinks. And we have done a great job up to this point with our numbers, but if we don't remain vigilant and responsible, then we put everything that we've worked to do at risk. And the other thing I'd like to say is that this also sets the tone for visitors coming into our community. I know that Hammock is busy, and there's individuals who are traveling outside of Hammock who don't respect the quarantine. And I'm hopeful that if they know that Palm Coast is having a mandate on mask-wearing, that perhaps will take it a bit more seriously. I know that individuals in Flagler County are worried as a whole from outsiders, but so am I from people coming into our community that are hotter spots than we are right now. So I'm just looking at the data, and I'm looking at the overall health of our community and the susceptibility and our age demographic that we have to realistically try to protect in Palm Coast. And I'm in support of what we're going after here, Mayor. And I was thankful that Sheriff Staley was able to publicly comment and flush out how he thinks that he would be able to help us ensure that a mandate would be successful.
Thank you. I appreciate your input. Councilmember Cuff.
Yes, Mayor. You know, in thinking this through, I remember it seems like a million years ago now, but it was only a few weeks when the city started shutting down its public facilities in response to the stay-at-home mandates. And we received, I'm sure the other council members did too, many emails saying, oh, don't do that. You don't need to do that. We're responsible. We know how to stay away from each other, and we're mature adults. And I'd like to think all those people were sincere, and all those people are still healthy, and we're telling the truth. What we're seeing in the last couple of weeks here is that regardless of how many responsible people we have, and there are many out there, there aren't enough of them. And we need to do whatever we can to get people to wear masks. This, to echo Councilmember Branquino's statements, this isn't a political issue. I don't care if you want to wear a red mask that says MAGA, if you want to wear a blue mask that says Biden 2020, Black Lives Matter, Blue Lives Matter, All Lives Matter, or unicorns and rainbows. People that are out in public in situations where they cannot be sure they're going to be able to stay far enough away from their fellow residents need to have a mask on. The excuses that I have seen offered by the anti-mask people on the claimed legal basis, why they can't be compelled to wear a mask because of the constitutional privacy laws in the Florida Constitution. Or it all strikes me as, it's the same as five-year-olds trying to tell their parents why they shouldn't have to go to bed at their regular bedtime. They're make-weight arguments by people that have agendas other than the best interests of their fellow citizens. So I don't like to tell anybody what they have to do, what they ought to do. I hope we can rely on the common sense and the common decency of our citizens. But if we don't do something to start turning these numbers around and getting them headed in the right direction, the economic impact on this community, on this state, on the nation is going to be enormous even compared to what we've already had to suffer. So I completely support whatever we can do to increase the number of people who are wearing masks out in public. And again, it's not a political issue. It's a medical issue. It's a survival issue. We're supposed to be the smartest species on the planet. And I hate to be harsh, but there's a lot of people that I run into every time I have to go to Publix or Lowe's or anyplace else that aren't living up to that description. So please, please, it isn't over. It's not going away because we wish it will. We need to live with it, and we need to deal with it if we want to keep our community open, keep our citizens working, keep our economy running, and keep as many people as possible healthy and prevent the kind of needless deaths that we've seen so far. That's my position on it.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Howell.
I think both Councilman Branquino and Councilman Cuff pretty well nailed it. You know, sometimes in government, we have to protect the public from themselves. And in this particular scenario, I totally agree with making the mask mandatory. Yes, if there are health issues and a person can't wear the mask, there's always exceptions. But I'm one of those guys at age 77 that's in that high-risk category, and I'm trying to make it to 78. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Well, I really appreciate all the input. You know, again, I thought it was important for us as a governing body that does set policy for this community to state on the record how we feel about this issue. It's unfortunate that it has taken the political turn and nature it has. As we, from the very beginning of COVID, our response was reliant upon our Health Department and our emergency management teams that spent an enormous amount of time digging into the data and the details that allowed us to make recommendations and decisions that kept everyone safe as a whole. Our numbers are and were substantially low, and that really is due in part to our residents' compliance. When the governor shut down the state, our residents stayed home. That was significant. Unfortunately, this now has taken another dangerous turn with the numbers that we're seeing. We're told from our hospital system that the numbers of patients are getting to a point that they're concerned. And those are the professionals that are guiding us through these decisions. And it's important that we listen to them, and it's important that we heed their advice. We do it when we have hurricanes. We do it when we have wildfires. This is a public health crisis that has hit the world. And we, as one part of this dynamic, have to take that seriously. And so the proclamation that I have brought up, Matt, about New Smyrna, if you can read that into the public record, because there are some exemptions. There are some exceptions to it. It does talk about if you do have health conditions, you know, you are exempt from this requirement. It talks about, you know, anywhere outside, right? You know, so this only has to do with being indoors. And when you're indoors, you know, and we're asking you to please be considerate to your neighbors and other community members and our healthcare workers and first responders who are in the most contact of anybody in our community and are at risk. So it's not just our senior citizens and those that fall into at-risk categories. Our first responders continue to respond to calls on a daily basis. Our healthcare workers continue to treat patients at their medical facilities. That has not stopped because COVID has hit our community. What has changed is the amount of hours and sacrifices that they are making. And what we can't afford is for our first responders or our healthcare workers to become infected and not be able to respond as they need to and they're trained to. And so it is important that we do take this very, very seriously, trying again to understand where we find that balance of doing it within what we feel will be very helpful to remedy what we're seeing today. So do you have that, Matt?
I do. I have the entire thing, the entire ordinance. Most of the initial wheresses are procedural, so I think it'd probably be better served unless the council would like me to read the entire, entire thing to start with, the enabling whereas, and then the actual sections of the proposed resolution. So essentially, whereas the City of Palm Coast finds that it is in the best interest of the public health, safety, and general welfare that the following resolution be adopted. Now, therefore, be resolved by the City Council of the City of Palm Coast, Florida. Section 1 findings, we adopt those wheresses that set the pace. Talk about the governor's executive orders and talk about the CDC recommendations. Section 2 definitions, we're talking about face coverings. Shall mean uniform piece of material that securely covers a person's nose and mouth and remains affixed in place without the use of one's hands, whether this is store-bought, homemade, or concurrent, has to be concurrent with CDC guidelines. Social distancing shall mean keeping space between you, yourself, and other people by staying at least six feet, approximately two arms' length away. And companion shall mean any person by whom you are accompanied. Section 3, requiring face coverings. Every person living, working, visiting, or doing business in the City of Palm Coast shall wear a face covering in any indoor location other than home or residence. Every person living, working, visiting, or doing business in the City of Palm Coast shall wear a face covering in any public outdoor location. Shall, and that is ameliorated by the distancing and the exceptions. If you can distance, it's not required outdoors. If you're two feet apart, you're walking somewhere outdoors, there's still that requirement. So if you can distance, that is the exception to the mask requirement. There are situations where people might be in lines or places, and if they're not distancing, they should have their mask on is the intent of this resolution. Medical and surgical face masks, such as N95 masks or other similar medical or surgical masks, are still in short supply and should be reserved for healthcare personnel and other first responders with the greatest need for such personal protective equipment. Section D, nothing herein shall require or allow a person to wear a face covering as so to conceal the identity of the wearer in violation of Chapter 876 of the Florida statutes. E, all businesses are encouraged to prohibit entry of any person who is not wearing a face covering with the exception of those listed below. And mayors, we get to that point. Section 4, exceptions. Nothing herein shall require the wearing of face coverings by the following persons. Persons under the age of 2 years of age. Persons observing social distancing in accordance with CDC guidelines. Persons for whom a face covering would cause impairment due to an existing health condition or cannot personally apply and remove the face mask or face covering. Persons working in a business or profession who do not have interactions with other persons. Persons working in a business or profession who maintain social distancing from those persons. Persons working in a business or profession where use of a face covering would prevent them from performing duties of a business or profession. Persons exercising while maintaining social distancing. Persons eating or drinking. Public safety, fire, or other life safety and healthcare personnel as their personal protective equipment requirements will be governed by their respective agencies. And lastly, these requirements shall not apply to any person who is hearing impaired that needs to have their mouth seen in order to communicate, the essentials of communication. And that, in essence, is the action of this resolution, Mayor.
So let me ask before we get into specifics, again, about, we have to talk about mandating and that as a separate issue. I just want to see in the language that our city manager read, was there anything that any of the council members felt they would like to exclude or include or add?
I felt comfortable with that verbiage, Ms. Mayor.
Everyone else okay?
Yeah. That sounded pretty good.
Okay, so that's the first part. And then obviously, we have the second part. I know the sheriff has made it very clear, and, you know, we have to be respectful. He knows his agency. He knows the resources available to what his needs are. And, you know, did not feel it appropriate that that agency be the one to enforce any type of measures that we put in place officially. He suggested some sort of compliance issue with no trespass, with possible code enforcement as a way. So I'd like either our city manager, city attorney, to weigh in on that aspect of it and what your thoughts are. And again, you're the one who allocates resources for code, so that's something you need to discuss.
Yep. So the way I'm understanding the sheriff's position, I did have a conversation with Sheriff Staley today, and he did send out his position in writing, is that, you know, ordinances by default that don't have an enforcement provision, and Bill will jump in if I'm wrong, but do constitute a second-degree misdemeanor, again, not the direction the sheriff's looking to go. So that leaves us with, you know, almost in essence, a voluntary or willing enforcement of individual indoor business owners who would like to have trespass notification issued if it is, in their view, that masks are required within their establishment. That is not something, code is not going to be able to issue trespass or mandates. That would go and be a requirement of the county sheriff, again, being asked by an individual proprietor, building or business owner to create that no trespass. We do not have a section in here, again, as everyone's aware, for any type of civil, initial civil penalty. Some cities have taken that as a $10 fine, a $20 fine, a third offense. That could be a place, in my opinion, where code enforcement would be valuable, not in a trespass situation.
So I know that St. John's County did not do a mandatory requirement, but they did a voluntary, but they asked businesses to sign up and assist them in participating in mask-wearing. And I know I spoke to someone earlier today that said they had about 280 businesses that did go online on their website and signed up to say, yes, we're requiring masks at our facility. And so there's a way around this, right? We want to work with our business community. And I know the tourism office did a great job with Take the Pledge for masks and made that commitment to them. So there's a way, I think we can track it to state, you know, please sign up as a business. And certainly, we can go out and walk them through what we're asking so they know. And, you know, that can be handled. Again, this is a public safety issue. This is a public health crisis that we need to respond to. So I see this no different than what we do at hurricanes to make sure that generators are appropriately adequate for assisted living facilities, those types of things. So I think it would be something similar to that. Go ahead, Bill.
Well, as far as enforcement provisions and penalties, you'll find it in the wheresses. We didn't go through them all, but there is reference to Section 252.46 of the Florida statutes. What that does, that reference, and it provides the basis, the authority, if you will, for this action. What that does, even though there's not a specific provision for penalty, someone's pet is upset about this, has something to say about this mask ordinance, what this does is it provides a default provision for enforcement, Mayor, and council. So, but it would be a second-degree misdemeanor, and this is something your city manager's already indicated. And obviously, our code enforcement would not be able to enforce that. That would be a sheriff. We've already talked about that. What some other jurisdictions are doing, again, this has been alluded to already by the city manager, they have actually passed ordinances, some as emergency ordinances, to initiate something that code enforcement could enforce, and that's citations. And that is not something that this resolution that you have before you does. But that would be another option in addition to the practical suggestions that you have brought up this evening, Mayor. But I'm just trying to go through some of the other legal options. This resolution does have a default enforcement provision. And of course, you've got some opportunities for citations. And then, of course, you've got the ability for local jurisdictions to work together with the businesses and the public from a practical standpoint to have a positive impact consistent with the objectives.
I think, you know, again, a strong educational I think, you know, again, a strong educational campaign has got to go along with this. That's got to be consistent with how we continue to communicate with our residents. And so my understanding then, again, the sheriff said he was, it was acceptable for the issuance of no trespass through the businesses if they wish to call, and I think that's probably the most appropriate way and easiest way to manage this type of approach. Does any other council have any input on this particular area or aspect of this? Are we okay as a council? We've already identified the language. Are we okay as a council taking the recommendations as far as a no trespass if the business so determines that they need that type of, what is the sheriff calling it, assistance?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, Ms. Mayor, I'm in support of that. And I'd also just like to voice that I'm sure, the same as everyone else, they've had multiple businesses reach out to them, and they're asking what type of operations they have available to them to be able to ensure that people are wearing masks when they come into their businesses, because they understand that if we continue to spike like this, that we're going to have to, you know, try to face another shutdown. So they're also on board, from what I've heard, and I'm sure the other council members have heard as well.
Yeah, I'd also say that the Health Department just is ordering an additional boxes of masks that they've offered to hand out to any entity or organization or business that really does want to support this, because this is really important. And so that's also something we'll include in this, is we will try to not only have the educational aspect, but also if there's a way that we can contribute the actual mask to that, I think that would be helpful as well.
Agreed.
Yeah, I agree.
I also agree. Make Nick's my words.
Okay. All right, so Matt, do you have clear direction?
I do, absolutely.
Have any questions?
I do not, I think. I think we're going to stick with a very strong educational campaign, continue to give a mask, we still have some here. We'll continue to partner with our Health Department to distribute masks, and we will have code enforcement work proactively to inform businesses of opportunities they have, the resources available, what enforcement provisions there are if they choose, and we'll coordinate that public and business-oriented messaging campaign.
But we are mandating that aspect of, we will be adopting that.
Yes, and that is in the, I believe that is in the resolution. You're talking about the enforcement provision, encouraging, all businesses are encouraged to prohibit entry of any person who is not wearing a face covering, with the exception of those listed, without the exceptions.
So I would need a motion to codify that, correct?
You would need a motion to approve and accept the resolution, and before there can be any final action taken by this council in the Florida statutes, we would need to open this up to the public.
Absolutely, I agree. I will do that, but first I want a motion, so.
Yes, I'll make a motion to approve this.
Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we'll open it up to the public. Any member of the public wish to make public comment on this item on COVID-19 updates? Please do so at this time.
As a reminder, if you'd like to comment, please hit star nine on your phone.
Okay, please state your name for the record.
Jim Walker.
Go ahead, Jim.
I'd state that the only thing you guys need to mandate is the Constitution of the United States of America, and if you try to force any code enforcement on me, I will be sure to ask for due process.
Go ahead.
Okay.
Did somebody just say, "Go ahead"? Did I speak up? I couldn't quite hear that. Was that a "go ahead"?
No, sir, that wasn't.
Oh, okay, thought I heard somebody say, "Go ahead." All right, that's all from me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker.
Hello?
Yes, please state your name for the record.
Allison Lauderdale.
Yes, Allison, go ahead.
I definitely agree with the first man. If anything is mandated involving the masks, it's unconstitutional, both under the Florida Constitution, which says every national person has the right to be let alone and free from governmental intrusion into their private life. This includes how we want to go about our business in the community. It's also against the United States Constitution. So I will, just like the first gentleman, if someone tries to mandate it upon myself or my family, then we'll be forced to ask for due process as well. And I want to be sure that everyone on this board knows that the sheriff, in his weigh-in today, said that he does not support this.
Okay, does that conclude your comments?
I do want to say that also, if the schools are going to mandate it, then you're going to have a lot of people doing homeschool. And that is all.
Thank you so much. Okay, that concludes the public comments on this item. Appreciate everyone's input for the record. And any other further comments or discussion by council?
Not at this point.
Okay, Virginia, if you will do a roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Clufus?
Aye.
Councilmember Branquino?
Yes.
Councilmember Cuff?
Yes.
Councilmember Howell?
Yes.
Mayor Holland?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you. Okay, I appreciate everyone's patience that has joined us as well, as part of the city organization. So we will now move to the additional agenda, item number three, which is any updates relative to COVID-19.
Thank you, Colonel Mayor, City Council. We do have two updates tonight. First is going to be Captain Escone and Chief Jerry Forte with the general state of the COVID-19 update, and then I have a short presentation and consensus question for council in regards to COVID-19. Captain Escone?
Good evening, Mayor, Chief Forte. I'm going to just say a couple of words before turning it over to the numbers with Captain Escone. When we go back to the March 6th, March 7th era, when we started closing everything down, we came to a point where we were receiving a ridiculous amount of public pressure, first to open the trails, then to open the beaches, and then open the beaches with certain distancing, then to open restaurants with 25%, and with even more pressure, it was opened up even more. And then the gyms and fitness centers were opened up, again, with distancing and a percentage of open. And then the bars. And every step of the way, this command staff and the emergency management team, both in Palm Coast and Flagler, warned the community that said, every two weeks that something gets opened and there's a spike in the numbers, then we have to reassess what was just open and address those issues at hand. We opened the restaurants, everything was still under control. We opened up the gyms and fitness centers, those were under control. And then we got into the bars, and then social distancing, as much as people said that they were going to do it, it never happened. We appreciate your vote, we appreciate the 5-0 support that you're going to have to move this initiative forward. We see it all the time, and now it's at a point where if we don't do something to streamline this growth and these spikes in numbers, you're going to see an economic downturn where we're going to start closing things down at the state level. This is a minor adjustment that people have to make so that the rest of the community can still move forward. And we, in the bar department, we appreciate the support of the city and the council by moving this forward, and I think if we take this step, it'll help slow it down or at least flatten out the spike. With that note, I turn it over to Captain Escone for the numbers.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Mayor, Council, Tom Escone, Captain, Fire Department. So June 3rd, we entered phase two of the three-phase reopening state of Florida. On June 15th, just going back three weeks, we had 75,568 cases in the state and 207 in the county. Now, as of this evening, just three weeks later, we have 213,794 cases in the state and 410 cases in Flagler County, of which 325 of those cases are here in Palm Coast using the zip codes on the Florida Department of Health dashboard. We've had 38 hospitalizations, and we're still holding at five fatalities. Our mean age, as of this evening, has dropped to 51. So over the last three weeks, with moving forward, with opening the bars and increasing the numbers throughout the community or throughout the state, we have increased dramatically. Just last week, DBPR suspended the sale of alcohol on bars, so to help slow that spread, as well as they've gone in, and they've regulated and removed some liquor licenses of a couple of establishments that were not following the social distancing protocols that were set forth by Governor DeSantis. Today, Governor DeSantis extended Executive Order 2052, which is the state of emergency for the state of Florida. So we are still under a state of emergency, and that order has extended for an additional 60 days. Many people, as this evening has talked about, last week, we did ask the community with a local proclamation, I'm happy to see tonight's 5-0 vote to go with a mandatory mask policy. As far as us reopening the city, we were planning on reopening the city this week, but because of the increase of numbers and looking at all the data and trying to stay safe and move deliberately, right now, we have an August 3rd reopening date, assuming that we are able to do it safely, with the numbers continually either flattening or decreasing. As long as Governor DeSantis continues things like he has for this evening's council meeting by keeping it virtual, we will follow suit and stay in concert with the governor's orders. For local testing, I would like to read off some areas that we can, if people, residents, would like to go get tested. They have increased the testing in Flagler County. Let's see, Mondays from 4:30 to 6:00 p.m. at Santa Maria Del Mar Catholic Church, they're doing a drive-through, that's 915 North Central Avenue. On Wednesdays from 4:30 to 6:30, First United Methodist Church of Bonnell, it's a drive-through testing at 205 North Pine Street. Thursdays from 8:30 to 10:30 a.m., Flagler Pharmacy, it's a walk-up in Flagler Beach. Saturdays from 10 to 12 p.m., Church on the Rock, it's a drive-through. And the Health Department, the county, are still doing Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, from 9 o'clock to 12, 12 o'clock, by appointment only, at Daytona State College site in Palm Coast. Thank you.
A quick question. You mentioned safely the reopening of City Hall to the public. What would constitute and what decision point is made that would delay that? Meaning, is it a continual significant increase in positive cases? Is it hospital capacity? What are some of the things that would drive that extension?
Yes, Mayor, it's a multifaceted review that we are doing. We are looking at the cases that are increasing. Most of our population are of that high-risk population. We are looking at the hospital status availability, ICU room availability, so we're taking into account of all of those things. But I would also like to remind you that we are still in phase two of our reopening plan of the state. And phase two does still recommend telework, and we are doing that as a city, as a business. But one thing I would like to remind everybody is, we are still operating at a high percentage, 96, 97% by using Palm Coast Connect. Residents are still able to contact any city staff, they are able to make a complaint, get services if they have anything with stormwater, if they need to make a utility payment, they are still able to do permitting. So we have not slowed down at all during this pandemic. So with utilizing Palm Coast Connect, we are still operating at a very high and efficient
Matt, did you want any council questions before you open up to yours?
No, I don't, no, thank you.
Any council questions for either Captain Escone or Chief Forte?
They've been very clear, very clear, very helpful.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor, City Council, here tonight to discuss an issue that was being brought forward in regards to testing of wastewater, so testing wastewater for Thank you, Doug. So why test? It's a novel application, but it's a very practiced methodology. Wastewater's been tested by the World Health Organization to detect typhoid levels, it's tested routinely for antimicrobial resistance analysis, and it's been used to surveil illicit drug usage among populations for several decades. So, again, novel use of this technology, but it is proven in its methodology. And this is, oh, not yet, this is guerrilla epidemiology, is what Dr. Bickel at the Health Department likes to call it, and it's a this-and approach, and what we mean by that is, this is another tool. Now, environmental surveillance, or this testing of wastewater, as we're proposing, allows us to look at RNA samples in the environment for the presence of the COVID virus, or actually fractions of the structure of the COVID-19 virus. But this does work in tandem with clinical surveillance. And clinical surveillance, of course, is the systematic testing, collection, analysis, and interpretation of human samples, generally, my understanding, is still a throat swab, and independent and indirect evaluations of system observations, such as, we monitor in our healthcare system right now, the state monitors the admittance of hospitalizations for COVID or flu-like symptoms, because they share a lot of characteristics, and until we have the test results, we don't know which it is. And so what the data is telling us, what the experts are telling us, what our Health Department is telling us, is that this combination of both surveillance methods, which includes continued individual testing, we don't want to discourage people from that individual testing, but also broader testing through wastewater, this combination is proven useful, and this is for the city's purpose, for planning, implementation, and evaluation of public health practices, safety measures, and decision-making. So that's sort of the baseline for wanting to do this. Part of what we're facing as a society is what we call sample size and sample time. On the left, you will see, we take a clinical sample, whether that's a blood test, or a throat swab, or other, you know, testing methodology. We have one sick individual per sample. Right now, we're running about a two-week turnaround back, we're back to that, if you recall when this testing started. Testing was taking a long time, the testing days have gotten down, in my conversations recently with Florida Department of Health and our local health representatives, we're back to that one-to-two-week turnaround. And with the wastewater samples, what we're doing is, for each sample we take, we're literally able to, in essence, survey a very large population, a very large sample, and what we're looking to do is look for shed virus. I will say, I also heard today, and I think this is why the wastewater sampling becomes even more crucial, the numbers have reached a point, because of the labor and activity intensification required to effectively contact trace in populations, it's almost to a point where contact tracing is becoming, if it hasn't already become impossible, because the infection numbers are so large, there's just not enough manpower. So again, this helps inform our conversations. So what we've looked at, as the city of Palm Coast, is identifying six discrete testing zones within our sewer system. The reason these are identified the way they are is because these can be designated into unique testing areas that have a single end collection point. So we can look at that discrete testing zone as a terminal collection location, and we can test to see the prevalence of the shed virus loads through an RNA, ribonucleic acid analysis. analysis of the wastewater. This is going to give us a secondary idea of community spread and the prevalence of the virus in our community. Again, this, coupled with individual testing, continues to help us inform our community to make better policy decisions and to understand what is happening with community spread and the prevalence of the virus in our community. We're looking at this through a partnership approach. I've been working a lot with Florida Department of Health, again, Bob Snyder, our local administrator, and Dr. Stephen Bickel, our medical director. And one of the conversations we continue to have, we had them in the town halls quite regularly, was, there are what's called Sentinel indicators for best public health policy, and those fall into generally four categories. It's the illness itself, it's the prevalence of the illness, again, testing, whether that's wastewater and/or the individual sampling, it's the hospitalizations, we're seeing those numbers, we just heard the report currently, we have 38 hospitalizations in Flagler County, that number continues to rise, and then, of course, it's the fatalities or deaths, we're thankfully at five, and I think we all hope and pray that doesn't increase. Some of those Sentinel indicators that are actively informing healthcare providers, are informing our public health system, are informing our local businesses, our residents, are informing us as local government on what actions we should be taking and how we can mitigate the spread or continue to protect our residents. Again, those hospitalization admittancees for flu-like or COVID-like illnesses, as we head towards the fall and we have a greater occurrence of the flu, it becomes even more difficult because the initial presentation, until we get those test results back, is a flu-like symptom. That is going to further stress our local resources and our healthcare systems and our first responders. Again, it's that individual test results, which, again, we know right now have, you know, variable margin rates of error and are approaching back to a 14-day turnaround. And so, one of the things that wastewater testing allows us to do is a large-scale testing application or surveillance, and this is at its heart what epidemiology is about. It's about the surveillance, it's about the testing, and then being informed to prescribe treatment, whether that's medical treatment, contract tracing, new policies, additional measures, reevaluating measures, it gives us that necessary data and information to move forward. So, what we have here distilled down is what I see as the city's purpose in this. It's to test these discrete wastewater zones for COVID-19. Again, we've identified six zones that we can identify. It's to share that data, that Sentinel data, that's so critical, with the Florida Department of Health. And then, in-house, and this is an example here, very, very time example of one day's data from a little while back, allow us to overlay, designed for active response, to visualize this data, and again, better inform our policymaking, our city response, our healthcare response off of data-driven analysis. So, what you will see from this one daily report from the Department of Health was that day's numbers, it's written out here as it could look for an ongoing tracking analysis. And then, that data, through our Palm Coast Connect system, is transposed into a heat map to show the intensity, this was done by the Florida Health Department ZIP code analysis, the intensity overlay of where we're recording positive cases of COVID-19 within the city of Palm Coast. So, this now begins to, again, provide another timely and relevant dataset that helps us as a local government. So, what is the proposal? The proposal is with a company who's currently doing this type of testing around the country, and they work through the BioDesign Center for Environmental Health and Engineering at the Arizona State University. Their chief consultant, who's been working with us, is Adam Gagreschi. He's not only a PhD, but he's also a engineer, and his background in engineering is actually in the design and operation of wastewater systems. So, he comes to us extraordinarily versed, not just in the epidemiology aspect, the testing aspect, the sampling and collection, but he understands how wastewater systems work and how we can best harness that information for that testing and data provision. What's included in this initial proposal and what I am proposing to get consensus on from the council, is we will test those six sites weekly for 13 weeks, that's a total of 78 samples. There will be a bimonthly report generated off those six sites, we'll get that basic data about RNA load and prevalence change, the amount of detectable virus, whether that virus is shed recently, if it's intact RNA, if it's degraded, meaning it's had some time to pass. So, for a total of seven data reports that we will be able to utilize and map and visualize that data and share that with our team, there'll also be a bi-weekly conference call for us and all of our partners to discuss the statistical analysis, to deeper understand what we're doing. And again, that's for all of our stakeholders for analysis and interpretation. Now, I believe two things. One, this is going to be either CARES Act or FEMA reimbursable, it does fit under the COVID-19 emergency, this is very useful information for us as a local government. I also believe that this falls within my discretion as city manager under the emergency purchasing provisions. We did have our purchasing department reach out and work with and obtain several proposals. That being said, what I was hoping to do today was to answer questions council may have, just to gain general consensus, I would like to, and I think it's important, to retain these services for the initial 13 weeks. We'll map, we'll track the data through our Palm Coast Connect system, we will work with our stakeholders to interpret and analyze and use this data towards policymaking. Nearing the end of the 13 weeks, we'll prepare a report and return back to council with the efficacy of this and the success and let council determine, choose to continue on sampling. The terms of this agreement could be extended for up to a period of a year if council is finding continued value in continuing this wastewater testing.
I'd like to add one thing, I mean, you know, again, I know, and I really, we have to recognize Dr. Bickel, Dr. Stephen Bickel from the Health Department, who truly is an innovator when it comes to all things epidemiology. He's been doing this and studying this for many, many years. However, related to COVID, you know, this is something that was not only encouraged by him, but he led the path for us to really identify different areas that would really be important to capture as far as datasets go. And another thing in keeping in mind, now that the school district has been ordered to reopen, I think it's more important now than ever that we have the capability of taking another layer of overlay and putting the schools, where the schools are located in our community, you can do an overlay map of that with the different zones identified. So, if we have a hotspot that's relative to a school and a school zone or a school area, that gives the Health Department a quick, very quick, rapid way to go either identify what is happening in that school, if there's some sort of outbreak, if something perhaps is starting there, or if surrounding neighborhoods are really being impacted. So, boots on the ground for testing in those neighborhoods, educational campaigns in the testing of those areas and neighborhoods. So, this is a direct relation to, really, the spikes, and it gives us a more zoned-in approach, in my opinion, on how we view COVID on a very large landmass scale of a city that we have. And so, I am in support of this, I do believe that it will be allowable under the CARES Act dollars. This is COVID-related, this is COVID testing, and it gives us another tool to be able to analyze and make better decisions. But I want to make sure that each council member also has any questions or comments on this particular item. Again, I think this demonstrates a lot of leadership by our stakeholders, and I'm excited about that. Councilmember Brinquino.
Simple. It's better to do it and find out that we don't have a problem than find out that we have a problem because we didn't do it. And, no-brainer, we could get this money back, and we could relate that to quality of life, too. Thank you.
I don't see everybody, so I can't point to them. Vice Mayor Clufus?
Yes, thank you. I am also very much a supporter of this initiative, and I had been interfacing with some of my neighbors here in Grand Haven, who had also made the suggestion, and I had done a bit more research, and I found out that you, Ms. Mayor, were also pursuing this initiative. So, thank you for taking it across the line, and this is another great data point, like you're saying, that we'll be able to overlay and see the propensity of spread, perhaps that won't coincide with our test results, and if we see it accelerating more rapidly than what we're seeing in our testing results, if it even gives us the slightest edge or head start, this will certainly have paid for itself, and if we can get the dollars back, even better. But this is absolutely, I'm very much on the side of ering imprudency right now, so I think this is another great data point. If there's any other data points that we can possibly collect, we should be investigating every avenue to have as much information around the current spread as we can, so thank you.
Is there any other council members? I can't... Councilmember Cuff? Sorry, I don't have the phone.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I think this is a good idea. I believe this is similar to the testing that's being done up in Chattanooga, Tennessee, and a number of other cities around the country. And, well, I certainly hope that what it will show is that our problem is increasing. What I understand it's showing in Chattanooga, Tennessee, is that the one-on-one testing of individuals is vastly under-reporting the spread of the virus in the community as measured by this type of sampling and this type of testing. So, especially since these schools are going to have to reopen, from what I understand, our ability to track this kind of information and hopefully turn it into not just numbers, but information we can use to help keep our community safe is important.
Great. That's it?
I'm not sure if Councilman Howell has any comments or not.
Okay, let's see. Did you need just a consensus?
Yes, please. I think we received that.
Okay. Okay.
Outstanding. So, next up, last one, take a look, unfortunately, is Bill, but I think the contract's pretty straightforward and we'll get this project moving. Thank you for your support.
Thank you. Thank you again, and thank you also to our utility department, who also worked really well in engaging the entities to make sure we were working with a qualified entity as well. So, appreciate everyone's help and support on this. Okay. We'll now move to Agenda Item Number 4, which is a presentation, employee awards recognition.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor of the City Council. We do have Renina Fuller tonight to present a new employee recognition. The idea was to present and be more consistent with the outstanding achievements, which are many by city staff. Those outstanding achievements are because council has set very straightforward action policies, strategic initiatives, plans, and directs the city towards achieving those goals. So, they're going to present the highlights, and then, of course, listed, which won't be presented because there's so many, are just going to start being a summary of the great interactions we're having and the positive feedback we're getting from our residents for the work that is being done on behalf of the city council. Renina, thank you.
Good evening. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council Members. Renina Fuller, the Director of Human Resources, and it's an honor to address this body this evening. The pandemic that we are experiencing has led to some of the most unsettling times in our city, state, and county. Our way of life from schools, travel to daycare, retail establishments, and our social interactions has dramatically changed, and everyone has made significant changes and sacrifices in their daily lives. Our employees have experienced the same challenges. Given that backdrop, our employees have never wavered on their commitment to delivering service to our citizens. Recently, we received a couple of awards. The Florida Storm Water Association presents its excellent award annually to the public-sector member organizations who have demonstrated a high level of distinction in stormwater programs and/or projects. The purpose of the program is to recognize outstanding stormwater programs and projects in the profession of stormwater management and the benefit they provide to the environment and our local citizens. The city of Palm Coast Enhanced Stormwater Program was nominated on the basis of demonstrating development and implementation of innovative projects, innovation in areas of stormwater management, permit compliance, intergovernmental coordination, best management practice, and improved level of service. Congratulations to our talented stormwater plant operators. On our wastewater, the Florida Water Environmental Association, which is a state affiliate of the World Environmental Federation, presented a safety award, Class B, second place to the city of Palm Coast Wastewater Treatment Plant 2. This award is for outstanding performance and professionalism in the water environmental industry. The award is evaluated on the plant size, the number of employees, the number of hours worked, the complexity of the treatment process, the amount and types of chemicals used, and finally, most importantly, the number of injuries. Our wastewater treatment plant number 2 has been in operation for over two years with no reportable injuries. Congratulations to our committed wastewater plant operators. Oops, let me go back. Our Parks and Rec, we have two employees from our Parks and Recreation, Humberto Oliché and Patrick Autry, who were at their lunch break at Publix. Upon leaving Publix, they noticed a gentleman who had collapsed and wasn't breathing. Humberto proceeded to perform chest compressions on the gentleman. While performing the CPR, the patient started breathing. Humberto and Patrick continued care until the EMS arrived. The gentleman is recovering, and this is another great example of how our employees never stop serving our community. Employee certifications, continuing education and development. Our own Human Resources Safety Coordinator, Benjamin Coley, successfully completed his requirements to earn the designation of Human Resource Safety Manager Certification. He also holds the designation of Master of Public Health as well as a Certified Public Health Professional. Our own Katie Sattle, our Deputy Clerk, received her prestigious Master of Municipal Clerk Certification through the International Institute of Municipal Clerks. The program is an advanced continuing education program that prepares participants to perform complex municipal duties. The program has an extensive and rigorous educational component, as well as a professional and social contribution element. Professional development continues to be a paramount priority to our employees. A few, the next few slides are recognizing the excellent customer service and professionalism provided by our employees on a daily basis. Example here is a citizen sent us a note thanking Ms. Jackie Gonzalez of her extraordinary effort in assisting our citizen on new construction permits. Ms. Gonzalez invested a lot of time in their conversations and provided valuable guidance even after business hours. Also, a resident wrote to acknowledge the excellent communication and attendance Mr. Scott Thomas provided in walking our citizen through the process of obtaining building Our employees continue to exemplify excellent customer service. In our Utilities and Public Works Department, multiple residents have contacted us relaying their thank you for the outstanding job being performed by our employees. This includes, but not limited to damaged sewer lines, removing obstructions, and swell In our Customer Service Department, we receive numerous emails and phone calls regarding the professional, courteous, and polite service our employees are providing. Our residents are also very grateful for the extra time that they are taking answering all their questions. These are just a few examples of the amazing employees providing excellent, outstanding customer service and showing our community that we are here to serve. Thank you.
That's good. Thanks, thank you.
Thank you so much. Great presentation, and congratulations to all of our great, hard-working employees. Okay, we'll now go to Agenda Item Number G, Phi, which is an ordinance. Mr. Reichman.
Yes, Mayor, Council. This is an ordinance to the City Council, the city of Palm Coast, Florida, admitting Chapter 29 impact fees to Article 4 Fire and Rescue System Impact Fee, admitting Sections 29102, adoption of impact fee formula, 29103, imposition and amount of fire and rescue impact fee credits for donation, 29104, use of proceeds, 29107, changes of size and mixed uses, and 29112, review requirements, code of ordinance to the city of Palm Coast. This ordinance provides applicability for severability, providing for codification for conflicts, and providing for effective date. This is the second reading of the title of this ordinance, Mayor.
Were you going to re-present, or should I just open up for council comments?
Thank you, Mary. Yes, I was going to mention that we have staff standing by, but as second read, there was no presentations planned. was no presentations planned this evening.
Council, any questions or comments on this particular agenda item?
No, we were pretty clear on the workshop when we discussed this. Very, very clear.
Doug, is there any counsel? Okay, thank you. I'm going to open up to the public. Any member of the public wish to make public comment on Agenda Item Number G Five? Please do so at this time.
As a reminder, please press star nine to indicate you would like to speak.
Okay, we'll close public comment. I'll take it back to this council and entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
There are second.
I'll second.
Seconded. Roll call, please, Virginia.
Vice Mayor Clufus?
Aye.
Councilmember Branquino?
Yes.
Councilmember Cuff?
Aye.
Councilmember Howell?
Yes.
Mayor Holland?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Agenda Item Number G Six is another ordinance. So, Mr. Reichman.
Mayor, Council, this is an ordinance to the City Council of the City of Palm Coast, Florida, amending Chapter 29 Impact Fees to Article Three Park System Impact Fees. Amending Sections 29-74, Adoption of Impact Fee Formula, Amount of Park Impact Fee, and 29-76, Use of Proceeds of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Palm Coast, Providing for Applicability, for Codification, for Conflicts, and Providing for an Effective Date. Again, Mayor, Council, this is the second reading of the title of this ordinance.
Oh, so simple.
Yes. I was just going to say yes, thank you.
I just have one point of discussion I just want to add. I had conversations with the Home Builders Association following this meeting, as I promised to listen to some of their additional concerns. One of the things they asked, they are not opposed to the impact fees, nor are they opposed to the amounts. What they are asking for, not with fire, but with parks, if there's any way we could stagger the collection at maybe the first year, do 50%, and then year, year and a half, do, you know, 70 or 25 additional percent. They're looking for not to take a hit all at once with both of these, and they're asking for some type of compromise. Again, not on the amount. They're not asking us not to pass the ordinance. I spoke with Scott Sowers, who's the president, but if they could sit down with Jason DiLorenzo or whoever Matt deems appropriate to come up with a compromise of staggering this out just for the parks one, not to take away for any projects that we have budgeted and accounted for for the next couple of years, but for moving forward, they'd like some type of relief, and I'd like to ask the council if they're open to that. And the second thing they did request is if at a future workshop, if we could, we would be willing to revisit the 2008 Parks Master Plan and really go over the list as a council today to see if there are any projects that we wish to continue with, or remove, or add, just so they get a true sense that it's current and that, you know, it's reflective of today's times. And so if there's projects in there that were decided eight years ago that don't make sense today, they're asking for just for us to consider at a future workshop to have that kind of discussion. I think that's very fair. I think that's reasonable. Again, they're not asking that we change the amount. They're just stating they were fine with both parks and fire. They're fine with the impact fees themselves. They understand it. They understand the quality of life issue for the parks. They understand the public safety for the fire, but they really believe this is a big hit all at once. And due to COVID, you know, they just have some serious concerns. And so I told Mr. Sowers and the Home Builders Association that I would be happy to bring this up tonight and recommend that we approve this with a recommendation by our city manager on who could, who would you recommend sitting down with them if there's a compromise to come back as a staggering of the fees? So, council.
Yeah, Ms. Mayor, oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Yep. So I would just like to say I am in support of looking at a staggering initiative, especially with our current economic climate with COVID and how we're not 100% certain on the trajectory that we're going to see. Hopefully, after tonight's passing of the ordinance, it'll be better than it was prior, but I'm supportive of that, and I think that if they were to sit down with someone like Mr. DiLorenzo and be able to come up with a plan to stagger, that would be best. And also, I think it is worth a sit-down at a city workshop to look over the plans from 2008 and see how exactly the landscape of Palm Coast has changed since then and where parks are really needed today. I mean, back in 2008, I believe the Matanzas Woods Golf Course was still open, and now looking at that area, it's a much different landscape than it was back then. Whether or not there's parks that are allocated for other parts of the city that haven't seen the growth that we anticipated when these plans were made is also a question. I think we would all feel comfortable having staff answer and just ensuring that the vision that we have for Palm Coast is consistent with what we were expecting to accomplish back in 2008, but with today's environment in mind.
Thank you for that comment. Did you have anything to add, Councilmember Quino?
Just to say that as long as our city manager and the person that he picks to do that with him will agree to the setup of staggering, a staggering schedule, I see absolute no problem with that. But keep in mind, even though I see no problem with this, we got to make sure that they understand this is an exception, that we are doing it because times are hard. We unfortunately cannot be doing that in the future for every just little thing. This is very important. Okay? And that's why we should do it, but make sure that we keep it in mind that this is not a thing that we're going to do every day. This is looking at the times and how things are going out there.
Yeah, and I really do want to state that they were very clear, and they were very supportive of both of these. So I was, I was very pleased by their approach, and I think it was, I think it was reasonable.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely.
Councilmember Howell?
Yes, if you recall, I did not vote approval of this on the first read because the Home Builders Association had indicated their concerns, and they wanted to look at the 2008 plan. And so now I'm glad, you know, you're hearing the same thing I've heard, and I think that this is the correct approach to work with them, and I would go along with the staggering of the fee.
Right, thank you so much. Councilmember Cuff?
Yes, I, again, I'm glad to hear that you had those conversations with the home builders. One of my points of heartburn with this new fee is not what the impact fee should have been for the last several years, but what we were actually charging and the discount that was being given. And the jump from what's being collected today and what would be collected if we implemented the full vote, so to speak, right now, I think would be a bit drastic and a bit of a hardship. Reviewing the projects makes sense. I don't think anybody's plans for something we're going to build 10, 15 years from now that we decided we were going to build 12 years ago makes a whole lot of sense, at least not unless you review those wish lists regularly. And finally, I would ask that we keep in mind that while I think these fees are needed, we have to try to make new growth, support what's going to be demanded by that growth. This type of a fee just makes it that much harder for us to achieve any sort of affordable housing here in the city. And I know that's kind of a dirty word for some people, but when I talk about affordable housing, I talk about the kind of housing that our municipal employees, some of the ones that we just applauded a few minutes ago, or school teachers, or sheriff's deputies, or, you know, retail and service employees that support our economy, can afford to live here. So I think we need to keep all that in mind, and if we can phase this in and keep a sharp eye on what it is we think we're actually going to use this money for, we'll be, we'll be doing our job. So I'm in favor of.
Right. Matt, do you have any questions?
I do not. I've got a team, actually a team identified that can have these conversations, and I would assume we'll defer action tonight and bring back a staggered approach. That's my, I guess my only question, because we don't know what that will look like yet.
They didn't ask to withhold the vote. I explained to them that would it be okay to take the vote and have an addition to the vote, a motion, recognizing that, again, they're not opposed to the amount that the study recommended, their amount to, you know, the collection.
I'm going to defer to you, Bill, about, because this establishes a formula and a collection rate, so now we're going to alter that. Is that friendly amendment?
Well, I would suggest to the council that if we prove this this evening and the, what is requested by the home builders is inconsistent with the code, staff would not be able to comply with their request unless there was something brought back to the council for an amendment to code. I have not had the opportunity, and I apologize, to look at this specific request against the current code to see if it would be something that would be, that's something that staff could implement with the, with the current park impact fee as amended by this ordinance.
So best staff can make an amendment and share that with council. The other case would be coming back likely for an amendment to.
Yeah, what I'm hearing is that there was a recognition by, by the folks, the home builders, that to go forward with this, this is necessary. If that's the case, then what I'm, what I'm hearing with city manager is that this council would like for staff to meet with the home builders, talk about what would be necessary to make this happen, and come back and report to council.
Yes, and then also have on a future workshop a revisit of the 2008. Okay? All right, so do I have that motion?
Absolutely.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
I'm going to second it. I want to open up to the public. Any member of the public wish to make public comment on Agenda Item Number G Six? Please do so at this time. Okay, thank you, Doug. And that motion was considering what we just discussed as well.
Absolutely.
Okay, and that second agrees?
Yes.
It was the second, okay.
Correct.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Clufus?
Yes.
Councilmember Branquino?
Yes.
Councilmember Cuff?
Yes.
Councilmember Howell?
Yes.
Mayor Holland?
Yes.
Mayor, the motion passes five to zero.
Thank you. Okay, Agenda Item Number H is a resolution approving, amending the Building Division Administration Plan Review and Inspection Fees by establishing a temporary 100% reduction of building permitting fees.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, City Council. We have our Development Officer, Jason DiLorenzo, to discuss and present tonight.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Tonight, we have a reduction in building permit fees and have a short presentation for you. This is our permitting history, I'm sorry, our building staff history. In 2005, the year after the division was created, we had 35 full-time staff in the building division. In 2010, near the bottom of the recession, we had reduced to 15, and as of right now, we have 18 full-time staff, although we're budgeted for 22, and we have four open positions that we're having difficulty filling. As you can see, the division regularly collects more than it spends to operate. The blue represents the expenses and the orange are revenues. The Building Permits Fund is restricted by state law, Florida Statute 553.80. We are required to provide a schedule of fees, and all the income, including investment earnings, are related to the fund, but they only be used to enforce the Florida Building Code, and there are no general fund dollars in the Building Permits Fund. Florida Statute 553.80 also requires all unexpended balances to be carried forward to future years or be refunded at the discretion of the local government. And in 2019, the legislature added that a local government may not carry forward an amount exceeding the average operating budget for the previous four fiscal years. So this is a look at our approved operating budgets for the last four years, including this year, and our four-year average is a little over 2.47 million. So the proposed action for me this evening is to reduce the building permit fees described in 553.80 to zero, 100% reduction, allowing us to draw down the surplus to 2.4 million. Before reinstating the fees, we'll provide a 60-day notice to the citizens and the developing community. And some of the benefits from this action include reduced costs to homeowners making repairs, an economic incentive for construction-based industries to keep building going, and to come into compliance with state law. And that ends my presentation, and I will take any questions you may have.
Thank you for your presentation. Again, this provides, I believe, you know, a nice result, and I favor the approach. And I know that when we presented at the annual Home Builders Association Annual Meeting, they were very receptive of this opportunity, and they favored the approach as well. So, council, any comments or discussion on this agenda item?
Just one quick question. If it passes tonight, when is it going to be implemented? And for how long is temporary? That's my question. How long is it temporary? Do I talk about a year, six months?
Six months.
Six months?
I think it's six.
Okay, all right. And it's going to be implemented if passed immediately?
The effective date is effective immediately upon the adoption of the city council, council member. As I understand the workings of this, is that it would operate until the excess funds get down to the amount that is required by the formula in the state statute, and then when it gets close to that, there would be a 60-day notice that would go out to the community, letting them know that, you know, we're now in compliance with, with law, and we're going to go back to what we did before, which is also in compliance with law.
Thank you, Mr. Reichman.
Councilmember Cuff?
Well, I think the question about how long we expected this to continue is one I had. The other issue, which isn't direct, it's related to this, is I was interested to see the head count and the number of positions we have empty. I actually had a couple of builders approach me and ask us why we weren't using some of the extra money to hire staff or do what we thought we needed to do to speed up and make the process of the building department more efficient. And I know that is a priority for council and staff, so if we have any information or input from staff tonight, I know the building community, or at least some of them, would be interested to hear that. You know, when we expect to be back up to full strength and whether we think we need more than just filling four empty positions to be more efficient and be able to process applications and so forth more efficiently.
I do, I got lots of answers. I think, Jason, why don't I start with you and let you explain the current program efficiencies, what's budgeted this year as far as process and technology improvements, and our philosophy on staffing and training as we continue to, I think, do a better job of processing building permits?
Thank you, Mr. Morton. Yes, the, we have four open positions. It's three building inspectors and one plans examiner. And the difficulty we're having is that they're specialized positions, and prior to COVID, you know, the economy was going very strong in local governments, where other local governments were looking for the same positions, and also there was a change in state law that expanded the use of private providers. So we are actually competing with engineering firms that now are doing building inspection and plan review. In next year's budget, in 2021 budget, we are looking to add two more positions as well, but again, the difficulty is, is actually hiring those positions. We recently hired a deputy chief building official, and the selection that we made came from Daytona Beach, and the reason why he was our number one selection is that he set up the internal training to become a more efficient staff. So in other words, the Florida Building Commission about three years ago set a program where you could do. about three years ago, set a program where you could do cross-training with your inspectors and plans examiners that would help them receive certifications that would allow them to do more things. We have a fairly green building division. They, most of them hold single or single certifications, a couple of them hold multiple certifications. So we have two issues. We have one where they're not able by law to perform multiple types of inspections. So we need to have a more diverse number of inspectors. But we're going to solve that with our cross-training program. Since he's been on, we've submitted that to the state, and it's for consideration at their August board meeting. And then we have several technology-based improvements that we're working on to create better route planning for our inspectors, which will increase their efficiency. They'll have less loss of time and better accountability. And those are all in the works for early next year.
Yes, I hope that answered your questions. Thank you, Jason.
It does, and I appreciate diversifying the department for training opportunities and breaking down the silos, because that's been part of the problem, right? You know, it's, everyone has their responsibility, yet every single customer has a different need when they come into City Hall. And so hopefully, this will not only expedite the permitting process, allow the experience to be much better overall. So thank you. Councilmember Howell?
The question I have is if the funds exceed what our minimum balances allow allocated, why can't we do some of the funding towards enhancing our training so that we can streamline and get more of these people qualified? You know, you've got the funding available for the training, and it's just a matter of getting the trainers in and setting up programs so that our people can get expeditiously trained. Have you given any thought to that?
Yeah, we have. Thank you for that question, Councilmember Howell. So, you know, we talked about early on, we didn't want to make a money grab towards the excess revenue. This money belongs back to the building community. This is our excess funds they paid in good faith for service. So we've programmed in and conversations with the building community, those dollars, as Jason mentioned, for continued technology enhancements and cross-training. And we did that at a level that we felt was reasonable and fair to our building partners, our building community partners. And so that's where we're at with the dollars that we've allocated for our internal improvement programs, our software improvement programs, and technology improvements.
Okay.
But it's a good point. I appreciate it because I, you know, I think it goes to one of our council priorities to make it more business-friendly. So I think we need to make sure we keep doing that. All right. Any member of the public wish to make public comment on agenda item number H seven? Please do so at this time.
Hi, good evening. Anna Maria Bad, Executive Officer with the Plaza Home Builders Association. Jason and Mayor Holland did attend our last membership meeting and virtually, of course, and brought this up to us. And overall, we are absolutely in agreement with it, and we thank you for that. Previous to COVID, we had, the home builders had conversations with Jason about some other ways to use the surplus money. Some of it ended up being kind of implemented during the times of COVID, such as the virtual inspection, virtual inspection. So I would like to ask that in addition to the building fee reduction, that we still look at some of those options and maintaining those. And we absolutely acknowledge the need for additional staff. The only concern there is that the, a major reason, not the only, but a major reason for the surplus was a staff person in the budget who didn't exist for year over year over year over year. And I understand that the current leadership was not a part of that budget at the time, and, you know, that's, all things aside, right? So just some things to consider going forward, but we do absolutely thank you for this proposed reduction in permitting fees and ask that you look at the additional options that were spoken about before. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next speaker. Thank you. Can I have a motion on this resolution?
I'll make that motion.
There's a second.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, Virginia, please.
Vice Mayor Clufus?
Yes.
Councilmember Branquino?
Yes.
Councilmember Cuff?
Yes.
Councilmember Howell?
Yes.
Mayor Holland?
Yes.
Mayor, the motion passes five to zero.
Thank you very much. Agenda item number eight is a resolution approving a construction contract with Syncor Electric for the construction of a FEMA generators project.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, City Council. Tonight, we have Carl Cote and Mary Cronenberg here to explain to us why this is coming back and present this proposal.
Good evening. We do not have a formal presentation. We're just here to give a verbal update on what we have before you. This is for a construction contract with Tinturel Electric. This is to continue our program to make the city more resilient. This project will provide emergency generators to five lift stations throughout the city. This is in addition to the existing 30 generators that we have underway under construction at the moment. This is all part of a FEMA grant that will be covering 75% of the project cost. And so that will bring us a total of 35 generators in total, which bringing all lift stations, you know, being ready to act in emergency events. So we do have some updates on our current projects, or if you'd like more details on this specific project. Mary is here to answer any questions, provide more detail if you'd like.
Council, any questions or comments on this agenda item?
No, not me.
Any member of the public wish to make public comment on agenda item number H eight? Please do so at this time. Thank you, Doug. I'll take it back to council and entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, please. Virginia?
Vice Mayor Clufus?
Aye.
Councilmember Branquino?
Yes.
Councilmember Cuff? Thank you. Councilmember Howell? Councilmember Howell, yes? Did he say yes?
Yes.
Mayor Holland. Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you so much. I love technology. H nine is a resolution approving the purchase of materials, equipment, design, and construction services and related expenses for security cameras and infrastructure for Holland Park. This is exciting.
Well, tonight, and this is one I'm actually behind the apple on, and I believe this is related to the Security Master Plan, and the conversation is going to be led by IT Director Doug Akins, I believe, with some support from Carl Cote and Lauren Johnston this evening.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and council. Hopefully not too exciting, 8 o'clock at night. But I'm here to present to you our plan to install security cameras at Holland Park, seek your approval to spend expenses not to exceed $200,000 of capital improvement fund. For the fiscal year 2019-2020 budget, we do have $200,000 that was approved for park and facility security upgrades by city council. And again, we are seeking approval to spend those funds for this specific project to install cameras and infrastructure at Holland Park. Obviously, Holland Park is receiving about $6 million worth of investment right now in its current phase. And as part of that, there has been a recent escalation in a need to have cameras installed there because of recent vandalism at the parks. It's been increasing, and so there's a need to protect the investment the city is making at the park, as well as when the park reopens, to protect the public that are there. So our plan of attack, Department of Homeland Security has been doing site visits for us, obviously focusing on our utility infrastructure. But we asked them to come and visit Holland Park in January, and they did. Because of the recent COVID restrictions and staff time, they weren't able to get their recommendations to us until the end of April. But these are the recommendations they provided to us. We took those recommendations and went to our vendor, who again met us on-site and gave us a layout, provided us recommendations of cameras to use, and gave us that layout. Again, so our overall plan is we're looking to install about 18 high-definition cameras. The plan that's in your packet has 1080p cameras. We'll be upgrading several of those to 4K for better facial recognition. It'll provide coverage for the playgrounds, splash park, basketball court, and historical society building and entrance. And also, it calls for a upgrade to our current video archiving system to accommodate for these new high-def cameras and also for future growth. So with that, any questions you may have?
Work with the Sheriff's Department?
Yes, ma'am. They reviewed our current recommendations, and we're looking at also having them help us assist which cameras should be higher definition for that recognition.
Okay. Yeah, I think that's important, again, because I find vandalism shameful, frankly, and in particular when, you know, our taxpayers are making a significant investment to improve our facilities. So when vandalism does take place, you know, I'm hopeful that we have enough on the camera to actually be able to identify individuals that do this at our parks, because it's not just Holland Park. We've had issues at Indian Trail Sports Complex. And years ago, before the park was even renovated, someone came in and burnt the bathroom down, and they had to rebuild it. So this is really important. Again, this is an asset for our community, and so anything that we can do to arm our law enforcement partner, I think, would be helpful. Okay.
So once again, this is all about safety, and it's one thing I'm completely for. Also, it's another crime-fighting tool for our great sheriff, which most likely will appreciate it. Thank you, Ricky.
Council, any other questions or comments on this particular agenda item?
Ms. McCuff?
Councilmember Cuff?
No, no further questions.
Vice Mayor Clufus?
Vice Mayor Clufus?
Yes. I'd just also like to comment that this looks like a great, and it's, from what I'm seeing on the visual here, it seems like we'll have at least all the entrances covered, and this should be able to stop anything that we encounter. Doug, I was just curious, does this piggyback on top of our fiber network, fiber net? Just if we could give kudos, shout out to where we're using our fiber infrastructure, I would appreciate that. Is this running on our own fiber so that we can facilitate this?
All this is running off of our own fiber. We're trying to hardwire as many cameras as possible. The few we can't get through are boring. We maybe use Wi-Fi, but it'll all be backhauled by our fiber.
Awesome, that's great. So we're not going to be having to pay for transport, which is fantastic. I think that's an important point. Good work.
That's a great point. I just have a question then, going back, since Commander Williams, you're in the room, what currently, what's the process when someone vandalizes one of our parks? I mean, I know, obviously, you come out and take a report. It's very hard to catch individuals that are doing this, correct? Or, I mean, is there a process?
Well, yeah, if there's no witness, I mean, typically, we come out and we make a report after the fact. It's happened, we come, we discover it the next day when the employees come to work or whatever the case may be. And we have no idea who did it. Now, obviously, without surveillance of some sort, whether it be covert, you know, a deputy hiding in the woods or cameras, we have no idea who did this. Now, when we do have some sort of surveillance, it gives us an opportunity to identify suspects. And in case this Holland Park, we have possibly identified, I'm sorry, not Holland Park, the community center with the damage to the truck.
Yep.
We have identified possible suspects due to the surveillance cameras at the community center.
That's great.
And in the process of putting charges through against them.
Right.
So it shows the importance of having it, not only to deter, you know, hopefully, people would see the cameras and change their mind, but the ones who are silly enough to do it, then we can actually catch them, prosecute them.
That's a great point. Yep, deterring, that's true. Okay, great presentation. Thank you, Doug. Council, I will open it up to the public. Any member of the public wish to make public comment on agenda item number H nine? Please do so at this time. Please state your name for the record.
James Walker.
Yes, please go ahead, James.
I'd like to say I'm against scumbag vandals, just like everybody else. However, you want to put facial recognition cameras in a park where children play, I find that a little disturbing, especially because I have a little one that goes to that park. I think if you're going to put these facial recognition cameras up that big brothers watch them, there needs to be signs posted informing all the public that they're under surveillance during their time in the park. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker?
Is there an alert that happens when cameras in the park? I don't know what the policy is.
I will have to double-check on, there are signs that say, "Security cameras," or "active cameras in use." And I'm not sure what the elements of this particular notification plan, Doug. You're nodding like you have better insight.
No, I'm not sure. We can look into it.
But may I bring up the point? We're not actually using facial recognition software. I think the phrase was used in the sense that we would have high enough definition cameras to be able to see someone's face that committed a crime. There is a difference. We're not actively issuing like portrait machine learning to see if we have vandals at the park, which would be facial recognition. I think the context for which the term was used was misplaced.
Okay. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Great clarification. Thank you.
Okay, council, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Roll call, Virginia, please.
Vice Mayor Clufus?
Yes.
Councilmember Branquino?
Yes.
Councilmember Cuff?
Yes.
Councilmember Howell?
Yes.
Mayor Holland?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you. Okay, agenda item number I is public participation. If you've not had a chance to speak at the beginning of the meeting, this is your chance to speak at the end of the meeting. We're asking everyone to speak on items not on the agenda, to please call in at 386-223-1690. If you've already spoken at the beginning of the meeting, you are not allowed to speak at this time period. So this is for those that have not yet spoken. Now open it up to the public.
As a reminder, if you wish to speak, please press star nine on your phone.
Okay, thank you, Doug. We'll close public comment. A discussion by city council of matters not on the agenda. Councilmember Branquino?
Excuse me. This is, it's hard for me to talk about it. And I just basically want to thank every single one of my colleagues and a lot of the people that works for the city that showed me the love, the care. On my, on my son's passage, at 26-years-old, and I just want to thank everybody, because you showed me the love. And it's good to know that people actually cares. That's all I have to say. Thank you at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Clufus?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Councilmember Branquino, my heart goes out to you, and you're, I'm constantly in my thoughts, and I can't imagine what is going on right now. But just know that my heart goes out to you, and that's all I have, Ms. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Cuff?
Just to echo the vice mayor's comments and to say that I think that the kind of compassion that Councilmember Branquino is describing is something we all need to strive to show more, not just to our family, not just to our loved ones, but to our community to get through what we're going through. to get through what we're going through at this point. And so I'm glad to hear that folks were there for him when it counted.
Councilmember Howell?
Yes, I wanted to let Eddie know that, you know, of course, my thoughts and my wife's thoughts have been with you all along, as my granddaughter, who knew your son and worked with him. But I also wanted to tell you, I'm about ready to award our first Marco Branquino Scholarship in Teens in Flight. That will be taking place here shortly, and I'll keep you posted on that. Other than that, got nothing.
Thank you. Thank you, Jack.
I will just conclude with my thoughts and prayers and continued prayers. I must say, having taken part of a memorial drive-through virtual service, the amount of tribute that came pouring in for your son was extraordinary. And that is a testimony to you and Deena, and it's a testimony to Mark and the life he has lived, and we all can hope to have given back in the way he did in 26 years. And so you are in our hearts, you are in our prayers, you are in our thoughts constantly, and we are all here with you.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Discussion by City Attorney of matters not on the agenda.
Nothing further, Mayor.
Discussion by City Manager of matters not on the agenda.
Nothing, thank you.
Okay. adjourned?
I'll motion to adjourn. That's interesting. Thank you.